The City of Mullins administration and council members want to keep you informed. Please join us now for the City of Mullins Council meeting.
I'd like to call a meeting to order and welcome everyone here. And our first order of business as always is the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation from our chaplain. Captain Mestowski, will you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you for this privilege to call upon your name. We ask you, oh God, that you would come in the midst of us tonight and that you would lead us and guide us in wisdom and understanding where we may make sound decisions for this great city in which you have given us the opportunity to serve. Father, we pray now for the citizens of Mullins and all of those who dedicate and commit themselves each and every day to accomplishing what it is that you have called us to do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The local media has been informed of this meeting and the date and time and pursuant to the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Item number three on the agenda, I need approval. Motion to approve.
Make the motion.
I have a motion to approve and I need, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed like sign ayes, have it and the motion carries. Item number four is the consent agenda. If you bear with me for a minute. Item number eight, approval of minutes, October 9th, 2018, City Council meeting. Item number B, approval of minutes, October 15th, 2018, Street Committee. Item number C, approval of minutes, October 22nd, Administrative Committee. Item number D, approval of minutes, October 29th, Administrative Committee. Item number E, approval of minutes, November 5th, Special City Council Meeting. Item number F, approval of monthly bills. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion for approval. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it and motion carries. Page number two, and this is old business. This is an ordinance reading and is the second reading of ordinance number 18-008, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the City of Mullins Personnel Policy affecting overtime pay for exempt employees during a declared emergency or statewide mutual aid assistance. Who wants to speak to this? Phil, you want to speak too, please?
Yes, sir.
This will pertain to, what, three different departments or just overall?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Overall.
All right, how are you?
Um, the one thing we wanted to address was hopefully y'all will pass this ordinance for us out loud from all departments that have staff that are on salary, that don't get paid but put in extended hours during events like we had with Hurricane Florence. The other thing that we wanted to address was we want you to pass that, that we could go back and pay the staff for Florence and that we, I've spoke to all the department heads and we're all in agreement that we would want to come out of our current budget and be able to pay individuals for this past storm even though y'all be voting on second reading tonight without a good vote.
Phil, has everybody got their hours?
I know the police department has.
I have it.
Yes, ma'am.
All three departments, that's right. Fire Department, Police Department, and Sanitation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. President, if you would just find what everything's fine with you.
Any FEMA reimbursement for any of that? Okay, all right.
If we would have, since we didn't have a cap.
We didn't meet the threshold?
Right.
Okay.
Well, no, since we didn't pass the ordinance before the storm, so what they're asking is if they can just be.
Right, so anything forward would be done through FEMA, well, that's why we're requesting if we take out our budgets to make up for moments since we did not have this ordinance in place.
Speaking for the police department, y'all, everybody's okay with taking it from their budgets as far as?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've discussed it, I've spoken with Chief Dedson and also Taurus, his department.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, let me read it one more time. Second reading ordinance number 18-008, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the City of Mullins Personnel Policy affecting overtime pay for exempt employees during a declared emergency or statewide mutual aid assistance.
What, don't we have to put something else in here?
I need two motions. Motion for the Hurricane Florence and then the second, the motion for the second reading. I need two different ones.
Okay, that we will authorize overtime for Hurricane Florence. Okay.
So move.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this issue? All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed like sign ayes, have it and the motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion for the second reading of the ordinance.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed like sign ayes, have it and motion carries. Okay. Any new business?
I think the streets look wonderful.
Downtown sure does look good.
It does look wonderful.
Okay, any other business, any new business? All right, hearing none, committee reports. May pro tell me anything to report at this point?
At this time, no, I don't have.
All right. Police committee, anything?
Captain Mestowski and I went to the police academy a couple of Fridays ago. We had someone that's a member of our staff, law enforcement staff, that had been added and he graduated from the police academy and has joined us.
You and the captain the only ones that went?
And the mayor.
Thank you.
And the mayor.
All right. All right, fire, anything from the fire committee?
Chief, do you want to talk about the opening house ribbon cutting on Thursday because I missed that?
Yes, ma'am. Just like to thank everybody for the participation and everything of well received. We have participation from the community and from the county officials, city officials, all the representatives, everything of well received.
Okay, next question I had to ask you, have our young men that have gone to training, have they returned?
Yes, ma'am. They, they went for a weekend. We sent them forward for Swift Water Institute in Charlotte and they all passed, they came back, so they're quick and ready to go.
Oh, great, that sounds good. Thank you.
Chief, y'all did a very nice job out there at the firehouse. It looked, it looked great.
Holly helped us a good bit. She put the leggy stuff on, so couldn't have done nothing wrong.
Absolutely, it did, it looked great. Recreation, Councilwoman Wilson?
Not really. The baseball teams, I think, had a real good season. They did make it to the first round, I'll put it like that, in Florence. And I think they're getting ready to start basketball.
And soccer team, yourself?
Uh, soccer is out of the roof. I mean, we have a lot of kids playing soccer. One thing I will say, because I think most people are up to speed with what's going on in the recreation department, I hear a lot of negative conversations about our city and I think we all do. Cities our size, we are really stacking up. And our recreation department is second to none. We went to, I won't call them names, about two Saturdays ago and they didn't even have a scoreboard. I mean, you didn't even know what the score was. So I think we need to zero in on what we do have positive that's going on. If we speak positive and we see good things going on and acknowledge that we have good things going on, I think the people will pick up on that.
Yeah, can I say this? And also, I want us to always continue, even when they don't say anything, they address the issue, I want us to start addressing issues. I think that'll help eliminate some of the conversation too, but there are a lot of issues, a lot of the negatives that we're talking about, there's some truth to them. So we gotta start addressing those issues as they come along.
Well, on the plus side, we got, we got handed a really good, bit of good news when the penny sales tax passed. We're gonna be able to jump on it at some point in the near future on the gem and bring it up speed and there's a lot of good can come out of that and it's.
And Seaboard Avenue Park.
Oh, yeah, there's quite a few projects and it's a good thing because everybody helps pay for that. Street and Sanitation, Councilwoman Woodbury?
Yes, sir. Mr. Gilchrist turned in his report to council. He noted that all flowers were planted, planted a variety of flowers and shrubs on Main Street. He included two quotes that was active concerning irrigation system for the planters and maintenance and discussion in the last meeting on how we would approach that and the different options. So the quote, he included this quote with his, with his report. In addition to that, there was some discussion that was taken concerning the, and was asked to draw this information. He did that, he did that in his report as well. So I'm not sure if tonight if we're prepared to take it off the table or continue to postpone it, but that's his report.
It's not, it's not an agenda item, but if it is tabled, it is permissible to take it off the table and handle it if that's what council is willing to do. And the longer we sit, we're gonna, we don't do something, that sign is, it's the right size, it's very close to what we've got there now and the highway department has said that it's okay as long as we don't use it for advertising for businesses, that it's permissible to leave it where it is in the same location.
The one we got, the one that's there?
Mm-hmm. We can, we can put the new one right there.
We gonna tear this one down?
We'll move it. Try to disman it and move it somewhere, it's crazy.
What's wrong with taking it to the park?
I think that's where it should be.
I mean, it's brick, it's nice, it's beautiful, so why can't we just disman it, take it, put it right on?
And we should.
To the park.
Yep, and use it, use it for multi-purpose.
Okay, y'all, I've had eyes surgery, I cannot see. So will somebody please read this report?
Absolutely.
Robert, can you please?
Absolutely. Highway 76 sign project, October 10th. Jimmy Bryant, Inspector, South Carolina DOT, the sign can't be in the right of way, state right of way, property must be on property owned or leased by the City of Mullins. Then October 24th, report was Harold Coleman from South Carolina DOT. He quoted Taurus, tell Bo, maybe Millen, he can put the sign on Highway 76 as long as it's the same size as the sign that's there now. The city won't need an advertising permit as long as businesses aren't being advertised. This is from Taurus Gilchrist. Current signs and dimensions, he included 100 foot, excuse me, 100 inches by, width of 16 and a half, height of 94. Then he mentions October 16th, the planters on Main Street, Street Department planted a variety of flowers and shrubs on Main Street. And he also mentions that he included two quotes, one for irrigation system for the planters on Main Street and the second the maintenance of the cemetery.
Mr. Gilchrist, about the sign, the sign that we talking about giving Francis Maron is much bigger than this one in there.
No.
It's the same size?
Pretty much same size. But it's automated, it's, and it, and you can put, you can put a month's worth of activities on it at one time and it scrolls. You don't have to send people out there every time and change it out.
But then I was under the impression, the sign I was thinking is not because I know the sign I'm thinking about that was at Francis Maron is twice the size of the one that we got there.
Mm-hmm.
So this must be another sign that we, that you were addressing.
It's the one at the entrance, yeah.
I thought it was much bigger.
That sign is much bigger than that sign on Main.
Was Taurus going down?
76, was Taurus here? Getting that sign? Taurus, maybe you can address this question.
I don't know what side of the sign it's from, the main is. Y'all got the estimate or the quote, so it shouldn't be on there, the sign, sign should be on there somewhere, but I don't have that information.
If I make no mistake, this sign on Francis Maron is the size, maybe the size of those two doors put together. Now, I may be talking about another sign, Bo, compared to when you're talking about, and the sign that's on Main, on 76 Highway is the size of the door, two doors, one of those doors.
Wasn't that the brickwork?
It's bigger than that.
It's bigger than that.
Yeah, because you got two feet of brick on each side of it.
Yeah.
At least two feet.
All that quote that y'all got, it should have the size on there somewhere.
Okay.
All right, I think at Francis Maron, it looked larger because of the brickwork it was set up on.
Yeah, it was a big, it was a big breaking case.
And it'd be a different brickwork that we would be setting it on.
So we're prepared to take it off the table?
I think we need to go ahead and do something.
We do, because we gotta give the money back to the Healthcare Foundation, $5,000.
Well, either let's do it or don't do it.
And how much would the city have to pay?
Roughly.
Uh? How much?
$7,000.
$7,000.
And Anderson Brothers Bank has told me they would pick up the tab for part of it.
The reprogramming it every month, how much is that gonna cost?
No, no reprogramming. You put it into a computer and you.
Okay, who's gonna be doing that?
Well, Holly had agreed to do it to start with.
And she's done it right now?
If she's ready to ask.
Oh, no, I, no, I think she'd be glad to do it.
Okay.
Don't have to put wiring down there?
No, it's, it's, you do it, you do it wireless. You just, you can, you can, you can type it into a computer and drive out there and hit a button and it transfers all of it.
So that $7,000 was all in, right? For that?
$5,000 from the, from the.
Healthcare Foundation.
Healthcare Foundation.
And how much from Anderson?
The balance is $7,000 and that Anderson Brothers Bank is gonna do half and we doing half, right?
He didn't, he didn't say, he didn't, he didn't give me a number, but he said we'll pick up the tab for part of it.
Well, I think you can beat that.
No, I mean, that's because it's only $3,000, I don't see no problem with that.
It's a great deal, you know, we're looking at a gift horse, meth, you know, that's, I think it's something you can't ignore.
I don't even know what a gift horse is.
Taurus, who can we get to tear this sign down and get it moved to the park?
It's a gift horse.
I know.
There's some more money.
We, how about John Merchant, Taurus? He's been doing a lot of brickwork, you know.
Probably be the best person, but underneath that brick is a.
Foundation.
It's a, no, it's, it's ordered by, I think it's eight by eight wood timbers.
That's right.
It's constructed to stay there.
Yep.
But if you get ready to move it, John Merchant will probably be the brick mason I would call him. And it doesn't have power to it, so I wouldn't advise trying to get a general contractor or something ever, but if John can get the brickwork down, start tearing down with him.
Yeah, look, now, we gonna take the sign that's there, we gonna take it to Seaboard Avenue, did I hear that right? And we gonna put the sign up, we just not gonna take it over there and leave it until we, we gonna take care, everything that has to be taken care of. John Merchant can do that also?
I don't know, y'all got to decide that, I don't know.
There's some more money.
How, can we find out how much that's gonna cost us? Who, who, who's gonna check into that? Taurus, will you do that for us? Or how we do that?
I thought, I thought that was supposed to be included in that penny sales tag with the new sign because that's what the Recreation Director said, that's, that's included in that, you know, as far as the new sign and stuff. I heard it.
A new sign.
Because we discussed that.
I mean, if I make no mistake, we talked about it out last week.
Yes, we did, we sure did.
Changing the sign, changing the sign.
Yeah.
On Seaboard Avenue.
To a sturdy sign.
To a sturdy sign, which would be the old sign that's on 76 Highway. My question is, how, what is gonna be the cost of putting, moving the sign from 76 to Seaboard and what's gonna be the cost to keep, to put it in place? I don't want it to go over there and be standing in the corner. I want us to move it and put it where it needs to be placed and make sure it's properly put up.
Well, I know it was discussed because before.
We talked, it's over there.
Yeah, we, we talked about that.
If I make no mistake, it's on, it was.
And I told him that I want it to be included, since it was in my district.
It is.
And Park Joe District, that we want it to be included and now they were gonna redo the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, we discussed that.
Yeah, we already talked about all that.
We certainly did.
So my question is now, who, where do we go from here?
Taurus said that he'll do the, he'll get the quote.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gilchrist.
So I guess we just need to, what, make a motion to take it off the table?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to untable the discussion. Is that proper?
On the, on the, on the sign, on the proposed sign on Highway 76, electronic sign.
And may I say something, please, before we finish? I'm not trying to put a damper on it, not trying to sabotage, but sometimes when things are being discussed, sometimes if we talking about something else, we can miss. And because I might not hear it, doesn't mean it was not discussed. So we just need to move on and I agree with whatever the majority decides to do.
Okay, have a motion to bring.
Can I ask one question, man, before we do that?
Certainly.
Because if I make no mistake, that was part of the tax.
Yeah, it was.
Cap and sales tax to repair the sign, so will we be going wrong if we go?
I don't think it is.
It was part.
Part, part grant.
Part.
It's part grant.
Parts recre, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's fine. Okay.
All right, you have, I have a motion to take off the table the discussion regarding the proposed new electronic sign to be placed on Highway 76 where the current sign is and not, and to spend no more than $7,000 to go along with the $5,000 for the, for the, from the Healthcare Foundation.
$7,000, tell me, what are you saying about that again? I thought we said.
No more than $7,000 in addition to.
To what do you have?
The Healthcare Foundation has given us. The city will spend no more than.
Need a second?
Need a, we gotta take it off the table, we have a motion to do it and I need a second.
Second.
All right, now it's off the table. Now we can make a motion to vote on it.
So move.
Have a motion, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, like sign and ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you. Be wonderful, we could put some Christmas decorated, Christmas stuff up there now.
On which one?
On the new one. Hello, Jerry? All right, any further, any further information on the street and sanitation?
Yes, sir. And not to prolong the time, just clarification on, on the quote, what we're looking at. Can we call Taurus back up?
Sure.
Mr. Gilchrist, please.
On the first quote, I think the first one, it said the packet is for the irrigation on Main Street. I think it's like $11,600. He got zeros because he don't, he's, once he get in there, it's a little more depth of what he gonna have to do, the scale of the work he's gonna have to do. But he said no more than $11,600, I think, for the quote. Cemetery, maintain the cemetery, every 14 days, you got a pole in there and y'all can see the price of that.
I see it.
Yeah.
It's down to the bottom.
Now, this is a, this is an on maintenance person. This is a, he has his insurance, he has all of his, his i's crossed and his t, well, his i dotted, his t crossed. That's somebody, that's what they contracted with Charlie, you know, to maintain the cemetery every 14 days.
Am I looking at that right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that $93,000?
Yes, ma'am.
To maintain the cemetery?
Yeah.
Uh-uh. Well, I know they'll be here at the graveyard.
You know, my thing was, we always talk about the cemetery and what the cost of it is, but I gave y'all real numbers on what you're looking at.
Yeah, that's both sides, right.
That's both sides.
Both sides, yeah.
That's both sides of the cemetery. And if the city wanna contract it, I have no problem with that, because I'm, I'm, I'm the contractor. It's easy for me to work at the cemetery that builds, to work in the street. I mean, I'll say, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of detail involved, people don't pay nobody.
That's a lot.
We spend five days in the cemetery, four, at least four.
And you do, and you do an excellent job with what you've got to work with to keep both sides of the road up.
See, the thing is, you gonna spend two and a half days straight weeding.
Yep.
That's the four or five that.
Yep.
And there's no riding along more. You ain't driving, you take off the terrace somewhere. A lot of that stuff is weeding.
Is this?
And that's what a contractor would charge to come in here, to have license and a $0.90 to come cut.
Is that, is this the cost we've been paying before? Is this how much we've been paying?
No, that's just an estimate that this contractor gave.
I said that cemetery, that's the last seven or eight years.
We, we, we had somebody come in, they gave us a quote and Taurus, they lasted, what, four months? And said they couldn't.
They didn't, they didn't even last four months.
Yeah, they couldn't do it.
No, they can't do it. People come in here, $4,000, $32,000, $35,000, and once they get there and start working, they find us, we're not gonna detail them, but they.
I thought something was mentioned about a committee.
It, we are working on that and to try to bring the funeral homes together and maybe the garden clubs and what we're not doing, we're not collecting. We should be collecting from everybody, even out of, out of state people or out of town.
Own plots, yeah, yeah.
Anytime somebody's buried, the funeral home that buries them.
Yeah.
Should collect, and we only collect right now $100 a, and it should, if you look at $100 a grave, and most cities are getting six, eight hundred and up to, to open a grave.
Yeah.
But the reason I did that.
Thank you.
I did it on purpose so that y'all would see real numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
You see me come in here and say, well, I think it'll cost, I think it'll cost, that's a real number.
Whoa, that's $100,000 in here.
Thank you, Taurus.
Where do we stand, where do we stand with the committee?
Joe, Joe Gibbs has agreed to, to help, to head that committee. I think it's only fair that each one of the funeral homes be a part of it because they're the ones who, who, who deal with the families, they also the ones who will have to collect it, but both, there's, there's four funeral homes that I think really need to be, well, I say four, I say.
It's four.
Yeah.
I mean, even, even, well, no.
Troy and.
Therefore.
But McGill and, and.
Well, I think it needs to be city, I think it needs to be.
It's the state of city?
It needs to stay in the, in the, the ones that are doing business in the city.
Okay.
But, and I think you need a couple of representatives from the garden clubs because they, they have a vested interest in trying to keep it up and they've spent money out there. Taurus, had the garden clubs gone out there in the past and planted and then built structures?
In the cemetery?
Yeah.
No, but on the city property, yes.
No, as you're driving in on the right-hand side, didn't they go out there and build a walkway?
That's city property, yeah.
Yeah, but the garden club did it.
Yeah, that was, oh, that was.
Years ago, yeah, yeah. But the one thing that we, we have an obligation to take care of our dead.
We got to. Do you think Gibbs could come in and give us an update?
They haven't met yet, have they met?
They haven't met yet, no. He has agreed to chair it and he's a ramrod because he was head of the, of the, of the committee on the roads, what do you call it? The transportation committee, yeah. And boy, he, he watches his pennies and he's, he's a penny venture and he, and he also is one to go out there. We need people to, like Chester Duke, when Chester Duke's son, when his wife died, he moved his son from the cemetery down to the beach and he, he wrote a check for, was it $10,000? For, for us, for helping see that his son's grave had been kept up all the years. So, but we, we've got to do what we can do to try to, to build some type of loyalty and that people feel that just, problem is, people that live right here have families there, but they won't go out and take care of their own gravesites.
No. Some of them do.
Some do, yes.
We probably need to wait until they, excuse me, Carol, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I know so.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Some do and some don't.
Wait until we get all this.
Can I suggest that the Finance Committee meet and include Taurus and let's talk about the options of what we can do, what we can't. And let's talk about the options of what we can do, what we can't do, and invite the funeral homes.
Sure, I think that's the logical way to do it.
Something has got to be resolved about that.
Yeah, 'cause we've been talking about this about three years.
Yeah, forever. So, Tars, would you agree to, let me call a meeting for the, with the Finance Committee, and you meet with us, and Holly, will you get me a date set and contact the four funeral homes, so they can be included?
Joe?
I think we need, since, since that committee has been established?
No, it has not. It has, no, it hasn't. Only, only initial conversation.
But he's willing to do it?
Yes.
Let's hear what he has to say.
But I also think that, that Councilwoman, I, I, I think her Sanders' idea is, is on point, because one of the things he said to me, he said, "I'll be glad to do it, and I'll be glad to help get it started, but I need to have a budget." And he said, "I need to know what the committee's gonna have to work with." So, it's not unreasonable to, to look at the monetary aspect from Finance Committee. And then from that meeting, we can, we can have a foundation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, especially when you see this cost.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, please, sir. The last sheet of, of the report, still on the report.
Well, when you get through with that report, go on in, 'cause I know you've got some comments you want to make. Go on into your comments.
So, Street Department budget, it was thirty thousand dollars, capital outlay purchased last budget. And, and Mr. Gilchrist included the five items that we said purchase under budget, which was the forward, one fifty, long dead cabin chassis, dump truck, and the trailer. We're just shy of five thousand a million in, in the budget.
Good gracious. That's how it's ended.
All right.
I think Tars needs to be commended on what he does with the money.
I'm telling you.
'Cause I've seen what he's following. He's done a darn good job of buying with what little money he has.
Mr. Gilchrist? Thank you, Mr. Gilchrist.
You know, you know he doesn't like that.
All right. Now, now, if you've embarrassed him, go ahead and finish your report.
Got you, got you. And, and my, my last comment was, I wanted to thank everybody who participated in the Gospel Fest on last month, and everyone who spread the word, and everyone who did anything. Just thanks to everybody, to council members, and to the community, and to Holly, Felicia, everybody, the police, the fire, street sanitation, everyone who, who helped to make that a success. Many came through and spoke. Councilwoman Davis was there, helping out, also passing out water, and Mayo was there, and various others sent remarks. And so, it was, everything was much appreciated. We gave out, it was like eight thousand, five hundred bottles of water, three hundred and fifty packages of paper towel and tissue and...
Clean supplies.
Cleaning supplies, boxes of food. So, I think it was a blessing to, to the community, and plenty of good music. Slow start, but it picked up, and we end up going overtime, so I think it was a blessing.
And thank you for, thank you for putting that together. Yes, ma'am.
Mall at Baptist Church will be having their Thanksgiving dinner on next Tuesday from twelve to four o'clock, and everybody's welcome to come and have dinner with us at the church. We do it every year. Just wanna make sure we get the word out. That's from twelve until four P.M. on Tuesday for Thanksgiving. It's Community Thanksgiving Dinner, and you're more than welcome. Holly, can I ask you a question in reference to the affair we had last week? We had problems with the electricity. What, what's the problem? The...
I'm not, I'm not sure. It has to be at, heavy at the power pole.
At the power pole? Okay.
'Cause it wasn't in the building.
No, it wasn't in the building. Okay, the power pole.
Okay, that's a good segue, talking about events. We've got Thanksgiving coming up. And we wish you and your group a very safe and productive trip to Washington.
Thank you.
And be sure to give us a little feedback on your next, on our next council meeting. And Felicia, you got to hit the road, and we're gonna try to wrap this thing up. Anybody have anything else? Christmas parade. Christmas parade is, 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 we've changed things around a little bit. Holly, you're in charge of that, so tell us a little bit.
Uh, Christmas parade is gonna be four thirty on the eighth. And then, right after the Christmas parade, they're gonna do the tree lighting. And after the tree lighting, they're gonna do a sing-along.
Are we going to churches like we did? Or we not doing that?
They have not scheduled with churches.
Okay.
And we have an old-fashioned sing-along right back over here between the buildings. We're gonna have music, the music, the words, the songs on a, on a, you know, on a, a screen. And we got a DJ who's gonna be playing the music to go along with it. And we invite everybody, the cost of admission is one toy, not to exceed ten dollars. We're gonna put it on the tree, and then we're gonna have somebody come pick it up and, and distribute the toys to whomever we choose to do it, I don't know.
Toys, neighbors have the neighbors.
Okay, well, I have no idea, I'm not in charge of that, but I know that we're gonna distribute. We're gonna distribute toys. Y'all, man, you raise your hands, but there's a process here. You, you've got a comment you want to make?
I have a question.
Okay, ask it.
I just wanna know, when y'all giving out these contracts that the city is doing, offering different services, is it a website, or is it being publicly announced, so that all contractors can find what's going on?
I, I wouldn't say there is, but I can tell you, anytime that we've got something, if you've got a particular interest, you can always come up to City Hall and find out.
Well, I don't know the answer, so I don't know the need.
Well, that's, that's a real good point. I'm gonna wipe the stupid off of my face.
I, I hate, usually with recreational, we put it on Seaboard. Seaboard is how Seaboard, you can just get it. That's where we do our recreation stuff. That's only been my idea.
Hey, even like the city cleaning up, and like, like different stuff, and different contractors cleaning up, and then like, even with the...
No, we just, we gets on the grass that...
Okay, was that posted?
Yes, it was posted. We have, we have posted on board, we posted it in the...
So, everything can be posted on the board?
Yes, if we had anything.
Okay.
Can I ask, what's the purpose of our webpage? Is this, can this information be put there? Yeah, okay.
Okay, anything else to come forth, Council? Hearing none, I will, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have, have a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.